We all sat over there Lisa?
I know.
So this is Larry Williams.
Not close as that would. Rochester. Okay. Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone to South Weaver City Council this evening at six P M on Tuesday, June the tenth, twenty twenty five. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance from Councilman Windsor and prayer by Councilwoman Petty.
Our Father in heaven, we come before thee with gratitude for the beautiful community and valley that we live in. And we are so grateful that we're able to be a part of this and help us that we'll be able to be able to have open hearts and open minds and be able to discuss everything for the betterment of our community. We ask a special blessing upon our sheriffs, our firefighters, all of our military, that they will be watched over and protected as well as their families as they serve us as as they serve us. We're so grateful for everything that we have and we love thee and say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, we'll begin today with our public comments. If you've got a comment, we'd ask you to come up to the microphone and state your name and city in which you reside. And in address the entire council and be respectful. So we're open for public comments. Anyone? Seeing no public comments, we'll move on to our next item, which is our consent agenda. Need to approve the minutes from May thirteenth, twenty twenty five, May twentieth, twenty twenty five, May checks and April's budget to actual. Are there any changes or discussion on any of these items?
I actually did have one question on the on the checks. We have a, it's not Comcast. I think it's an electrical bill that it lists all of the different places that we have it. But then it lists a address, I believe in Leighton. When is that?
Which page are you on specifically?
Well, that's what I'm looking for.
Brett has an answer.
That that's the pump house.
Okay. So we've got one. It says the pump house right below that one. So that's the South Weaver one. And then the one that's the other address is the Leighton issue. Okay. All righty. Yeah, that's it. That one just caught my eye.
Any other discussions?
Would you approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Next item ordinance twenty five, twenty twenty five dash twelve, changing zoning of the Williams property at approximately eleven sixty one east South Weaver Drive from agricultural to residential moderate application by Lane Cap. Any discussion on this ordinance? Not well look for a motion.
I know this is just a rezone. But is there any? And maybe Lane will have to come or stand up. But is there any restriction on going up South Weaver Drive there with that?
So I think there's gonna be one lot that will come up.
Just a lot.
And no street.
That's all I did. I know that was a question the last time we looked at this area. So.
I could elaborate on if you want. Lance, elaborate on that. Lance is getting good.
It's okay. I mean, I think I that that answered my question. It really, to be honest, but you're standing up. Go ahead, Lance. Do it.
Lane Cap, South Weaver. There will be one lot on the South Weaver Drive. The old Williams home is there. And part of this, we're going to demolish the home. So our access is already there for South Weaver Drive. So we won't need to get anything, any permission from UDOT as far as that goes. We turned plans into day, but we've got to do the application. That would, is that what you sent back Lance? Yeah. So no more paperwork. The plans are done. We're going to turn those in for review. Just a couple of issues that we just need to discuss with staff. But so yeah, there will be one access on the South Weaver Drive, but it'll fill the it'll use the access.
That's already there.
And if I could on the south side, are you only having one exit there?
Yes, it comes off of Lester, comes into a cul-de-sac. All the traffic will go on the Lester. It will not come on the South Weaver Drive.
Okay, Brandon's not here. Okay, I would like to recommend for the city itself. We have had enormous complaints about the race zone down Leicester. Is there any chance, or maybe we should look into feasibility of putting a three way stop so that as they come out from the subdivision, that's a three way stop. So people have to stop all directions slowing it down before they hit the sorry, not hit, but before they arrive at the school. I think it's a better way to put it.
I'm happy to talk to Brandon about that when he's back in town.
Okay.
What would, just real quick to pay back, what dictates, what is deserving of a three way, four way stop and what does them? I don't know who rules are.
I'm not Mr. Traffic Engineer expert either. I do know that it's based on traffic counts and and typically sight lines and things like that. Speed of roads, I think, comes into play. One of the, one of the elements, I think, that a lot of residents bring up about stop signs is they like to use it as a, as a traffic control device and a speed device. But studies show that it doesn't actually do a lot for speed. Although in this case, I don't know, maybe that's something to to look at, but.
I think that'd be good to look at it again. Maybe that's something that we could have somebody help us on that. Because I know that it lowers the service rating of that road. But the last paper that I saw on that really was talking more about the width of the road and the length to the next stop sign. If you can and do get up to forty, forty five miles an hour. Not everybody is jumping and flooring the gas to get from one stop sign to another. There are situations, of course, where they do. But for the most part, it's just a quick, simple reminder that in the next hundred yards, they're going to be seeing a whole lot of children. So.
Right. I won't promise that it's there, but I'll talk to Brandon about the traffic aspects of that. And as they get into the development process, then that can be a point of conversation.
Thank you.
Anything else? Someone like to make a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty five twelve, changing zoning of the Williams property at approximately eleven sixty one east South Weaver Drive from agriculture to resident moderate density.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. We'll do a roll call vote, starting with Councilman Windsor.
Aye, aye, aye.
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 A unanimous motion carries. Thank you.
Rod?
Yes.
Now that's all right. I forgot one thing. Can I just say thank you to everybody here? Your time and your effort to help the city in their progress into the future. Sometimes, a lot of times, you guys are in a thankless position. But I don't want to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate that. Okay, our next item ordinance twenty twenty five dash thirteen, changing zoning of the Cooper Landing property at approximately sixty twenty five south, four seventy five east from agricultural to residential moderate. Application Shane Turner. Any discussion on this ordinance? Any information anyone needs?
The the only thing that I had to comment on it is I do think that we're again losing out on a great retail option. And I think you're missing out on that too. But the plans of the homes look very nice and simple, and that is a great second choice. So yeah.
If I may address that really quick. As much as I would love to go the other route, don't get me wrong. We did the, we had a conference with UDOT and had Brandon and Lance attend that conference, that online conference that we had. And UDOT was hesitant to provide to move their their access, their no access N A L A line. And so with that, not have, without having that line moved, that basically blew the the whole concept of any decent commercial being blown out of the water just because of the access, not having that. I think without having the access, Lance was on the same page. It's it's not viable to have all those cars coming through, even though UDOT says, well, it'll be fine. It's all the residents that are coming in there. They shouldn't be upset. Well, you know, it still is what it is. And so this, this is ultimately the most safest, most appropriate concept for this, for this piece. So just, just put your mind at ease. I know.
While you're there, Shane, then and again, this is just a rezone and it's not this
right.
development. But is UDOT okay with keeping the
Yes.
the two homes off of that?
They are.
I know they had heartburn with that at one time.
They didn't actually. They had no issues whatsoever with that. They actually suggested that we use it. And and I went, well, it's not appropriate because of what we had in here last time. So so that's and so that that was the request that we made with UDOT and I don't know if they would have been any different if we had any more persuasion from the city or not, but they really, their ultimate was, well, it's up to the city. And Lance and Brandon suggested, no, they don't want it. You know, they don't want any extra drives on that four seventy five's piece. And so basically, they said no.
And the only other question I had is on that north end, you still have room with the ditch and everything that's been covered and to do that? Because that's, that's pretty big. That's why.
Yeah, it's actually amazingly enough, once you get down there, the size that we have for that is quite a bit. It's just not very user friendly. And so that's why we have to get in there, you know, grade it, grade it appropriately and get that all. So it is actually a comfortable drive to come in and out of for a couple of, a couple of residents.
One question, it's not directly related to the approval or not approval. I'm just curious on the private drive going in there, there's that five foot pumper to the, to the west maintains that. This is like, could be an H O A that's gonna have to maintain.
We would do it in H O A. So from the fence line, from the fence line over.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions? Thank you, Shane.
Thanks, man.
Look for a motion.
Mayor, move to approve ordinance twenty twenty five dash thirteen as written.
Second. And a motion in second, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Councilman Halverson.
Aye.
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 Aye, aye.
Hey, it's unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item, resolution twenty five dash seventeen, adopting certified tax rate. Any discussion on this? I think we're all happy with what's happening.
I would like to hear from the city manager explaining maybe for the population that doesn't have our benefit under the news.
Yeah, so as you can see, this is a proposal or a staff recommendation to adopt the certified tax rate. Throughout the budget process, we've been talking about holding the rate and going through the truth and taxation process. And this is a reversal on that course based on information that we received from the county the end of last week. And so it was last minute, but the final numbers came in and the certified tax rate is less than half a percent, point four nine percent off of what our current rate is. And it ends up being a six thousand dollar difference. And we felt like that would be appropriate to, in the philosophy or principle of holding the rate, that half a percent difference is essentially holding the rate. And with the growth that's taken place in the city, holding the rate versus the certified tax rate, it's so minimal in its difference that that staff feels like we should hold that or adopt the certified tax rate as presented by the county and not go through truth and taxation.
Thank you.
Okay. Someone like to make a motion?
Mayor, move to approve resolution twenty five dash seventeen, adopting the proposed certified tax rate of point zero zero one four three four.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Start with a roll call vote, Councilman Windsor.
Aye, aye, aye.
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 Hey, unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, resolution twenty five dash eighteen, adopting the consolidated fee schedule. Any discussion on this?
I did do a report or some research, if you will. Had a friend of mine help me on it and went through all of the different cities that are out there, their fee schedules, and kind of got an estimate of what we were doing. And we're actually, at least for the changes that we're making, we're, we're pretty much to the average of what a lot of the other cities are doing. The one question that I do have, though, is that as we break down the fire inspection fees, the first thing we hit is home occupations. And we're saying that that's still four hours of work preparation onsite and post work at twenty five bucks an hour, charging them a hundred bucks to do the home occupation one. Is that just because we wanted to keep them all the same fee of a hundred dollars? Or who is it that's doing that and the the four hours of work?
So that home occupation, we require business licenses only when there are customers that come. So those aren't just the home offices and things like that. So this is when there are customers and patrons that are coming to that site. And so it's a similar level of work that would be required for other types of, other types of inspection.
So you're saying we don't require a business? That's right, because we did change that a few years ago. Okay, I was gonna say I disagree, but yeah. Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
I have two. One question of the city manager in the background memo under analysis that makes a statement increases to research and inspection fees based on actual staff costs. Is that actual staff costs over the last year, over the last three years, last five years? Can you give a further explanation what what that averages?
Brett, would you speak to that? You were the one worked with the department head on that one.
Yeah, it's, it's actually been several years that we've updated that amount. And based on what based on the studies that we've done and the time that they spend, it's typically one hour for the Public Works Director. So that includes the salary and benefits for that, for that employee to do the inspections.
What's the timeline that you looked at for actual costs?
For the actuals, I looked at la, I looked at the last two years and then what the current FY twenty six budget is. With that set and kind of came up with a, a number based on those numbers.
Thank you.
I, I will add one thing. There's a long list here of, of updates, especially in the, in the development realm. And this is something that staff has been talking about for quite a while and has done some specific analysis to basically ensure that we're not losing money on the development process and subsidizing with taxes for salaries or other things like that, that the rates that we have had have not covered the actual time and administrative burden that it is to process the applications and do the inspections and things like that. And so these really are just trying to get us in line so that we're not losing money on those endeavors.
One like to make a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution twenty five dash eighteen, admitting the consolidated fee schedule as submitted.
Second.
Here we have a motion in a second. Start with a roll call vote, Councilman Halverson.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Hey, unanimous again. Motion carries. Thank you so much. Next item, resolution twenty five dash nineteen, approving beacon code consultant service agreement. Any discussion and consent on this?
And this is just adding them to one of the, one of the choices.
Yeah.
We have two right now that are on our approved list, and this would become a third. The state code requires three now. That was a recent change. And so this, the idea is that if the city contracts out, we of course can choose among our, our list, but we have to have three on a list. If we do not respond in a timely manner to perform the inspections, then we have to provide a list of at least three that the, the builder could then use to do their own inspection. Still, you know, through the city kind of approved list. But this is adding beacon to our approved list with Shams and W C three. It does not mean we would go to them exclusively or all the time. It just adds them to the approved vendor list.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution twenty five dash nineteen, approving the bacon code consultant service agreement.
Second. Motion is second. We'll do a roll call, starting with Councilman Halverson.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, we'll look for a motion to suspend city council and convey in our L B A board meeting.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are now in our L B A meeting. We need to do a couple of items here. We need to approve the consent agenda consisting of May thirteenth minutes and May twentieth minutes. Would like to make a motion on this.
Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in, all in favor, say. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Here we've got one item, the L B A resolution twenty five dash zero two fiscal year twenty twenty six final budget. Any discussion on our final budget?
No.
Chairman, I move to approve L B A resolution twenty five dash zero two fiscal year twenty twenty six final budget.
Second.
Here we have motion in a second. We'll do a roll call vote, starting with Board Member Windsor.
Aye, aye, aye.
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 Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. We'll look for a motion then to reconvey back into city council.
Yeah. So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, city council, any new business? Dave, you have any new business?
There is one item, because where the council adopted the certified tax rate tonight, instead of going through truth and taxation, that means our next meeting will have the final budget. And one of the items that has been brought up but has not been included in the tentative budget was the emergency operations plan update. We received that. We received that quote essentially from Jones and Associates at twenty five thousand dollars to assist us in updating that plan. We anticipate that it would be lower than that based on staff involvement, but that was the number that they gave us. The question coming out of the last meeting was where, where would that money come from? What would we use to, to pay for that? Brett has looked into that and, and the short answer would be sales tax or property tax with some of the increase in the certified tax rate amount. We would be able to cover that. So the question is to the council, do we want to include that in the final budget next week or not? If we don't, we obviously could do a budget amendment in the future if we needed to, to include that. But that was one of those items that we intended on talking a little bit more before the truth and taxation hearing. But now if we want to include it in the final budget, we need to decide now so that Brett can make that happen or not. Cost to update the emergency operations plan.
Counsel.
Can't remember the urgency of that one. Can you remind me the urgency?
Most of the plan, well, the last update to that plan, I want to say was twenty seventeen. And now that you put me on the spot, it might be twenty thirteen, actually.
Uh, now that you put me on the spot, it might be twenty thirteen, actually. It has been a while since the plan officially has been updated. I, I could go look at that to confirm, but um, it's time to do an update. Many of the, many of the the contracts that we have, uh, I think have come to term and need to be renewed and need to be looked at. Updating of contact information for any outside agencies that might partner. Um, things like that. There's, there's just a process that you go through to evaluate each, uh, what's called an appendix or a uh, support function. You have your basic plan and then there's a, a, I want to say ten to twelve, something like that. Support function, kind of an appendix for each one that has um, information that we just need to get updated and, and current. And so the basic plan will, will remain pretty similar, but a lot of the, that ancillary information, making sure again, proper contact. Um, proper roles and responsibilities, you know, things are identified within the community based on, you know, changes in development and things like that and, and what the infrastructure is now. All of that needs to be looked at and.
And what was the estimated cost on that again?
Twenty-five thousand dollars. And the, the process, um, Emily, almost with Jones and Associates, she used to work for the city and she was the emergency manager. And she was heavily involved in uh, adopting the initial plan and, and making that what it is. As she left the city, uh, that expertise left and others did not quite pick it up the same way. And uh, and so the idea was she works with Jones and Associates, we could tie into that uh, historical knowledge a little bit and her expertise and.
So at that price, at that price, are we looking at getting just a, basically a, a project plan of what needs to be done on it? Or are we talking about um, all of the facts being completed and the entire finished?
Full update of the emergency operations plan.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, well, with um, the recent fire that we had here, um, Idaho quakes. Yellowstone supervolcano, the moon coming closer. Um, I, I think it just makes sense that we go on and make sure that the, the citizens and their properties are taken care of and protected. So I would, I would recommend that we move forward with it. So. That's fine.
I support what Joel's saying as well. Procedurally though, I'm anticipating a resolution that would come forth when we adopt the final budget that would say language in there that we're adopting the tentative budget as amended, and this would be one of the amendments to the tentative budget. Am I misunderstanding that?
Right, so the tentative budget was adopted. Uh, the things that we've discussed since then that might need to be changed, Brett's been tracking those. And with the final budget would, a staff report with a list of, these are the changes from the adopted tentative budget to the final budget. We'd include that.
Yeah, I support what Joel's saying. I think we should put it in there. I agree.
Everybody good on that?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, thank you for that direction.
Anything else, Dave?
That's all I've got for new business.
Okay. Reports, committee reports. Anyone have anything on their, like, committee like report on?
Uh, just so let everyone know that uh, staff internally have met to um, review the gravel pit uh, contract or agreement that is expiring. And we have set a date for the end of June to initiate our initial discussions with the uh, the gravel pits and in hopes to have a revised, renewed cooperation agreement by the end of the year. Um, that's my report. I would like to make comment that I did see UDOT. Um, I want to thank staff for getting to UDOT, cause I did see UDOT make some repairs on South Weaver Drive over there by the uh, entrance to the new development by the Public Works building. Evidently, they, they saw what we saw, that the asphalt needed to be repaired and they made those repairs. So thank you for responding to that.
They still didn't respond to mine. Which is like thirty feet down from that.
Yeah, where the car actually went over to the hill in direction to, to the road was
Jeremy, do you have anything?
Nothing new for me.
Joel?
Um, really nothing new. The only one that I do want to say is that if you haven't looked and seen the parks um, uh, new addition or cleaning up of the veteran memorial uh, parks monument. Uh, they did go in and fix the sprinkler systems around there, uh, cleared out all the weeds, cleaned everything up and uh, planted um, some rather nice looking uh, flowers and other things that are around there. Uh, I think giving a little bit um, of a, a facelift. So I wanted to thank them and let everybody know to drive by and look at it.
Those look very nice. Angie?
No reports, mayor.
Flare?
You attended uh, Public Works, so you can report on that. Otherwise, I don't have anything else.
Dave, you want to report on Public Works?
Sure. Uh, I know.
Dave attended.
I did too.
That, that's how mayors work, right? Just hand that off. I think it's great. Uh, it was actually a, maybe the smoothest meeting we've had as far as the owner architect and contractor getting together. The project is in full swing and they're making really good progress. Uh, they're still on a timeline for uh, mid to end of August. At least that's what they tell us. We feel like there's a lot to be done uh, in the next two months to make that happen, but they're very close to having everything prepared in the main building to then start the internal build out. So um, in the two bays that will be the office, they've got the steel structure all in place. They're gonna be pouring the mezzanine first, and then they'll pour the floor uh, for the rest of the bays and the office area. And at that point, they can start uh, building out, so. There's still a little bit on the site to do, but uh, curb gutter is going in and drains are, are installed between the buildings or, are going to be here uh, within the next week or so. Um, chain link fencing is getting ready to go up. There's, there's quite a few of those things taking place and um, they say they're on track and, and they're moving forward pretty quickly. So it's been exciting to see it come together.
They're still confident that they're gonna make that date. A little hesitant, but we'll see what happens. They're saying August twentieth.
Was the date they said.
What they're saying.
I would like to mention that I thought Andrew was gonna say something about the stage, but the stage expansion is looking, looking good. Appreciate the donation.
Today, we're gonna pour that tomorrow and pretty well have it completed.
Right in time for Concert in the Park.
Time for Concert in the Park, Shaly.
And thanks again to Paul. Thanks again to Paul for his uh, donation.
Yeah, thank you, Paul.
Okay, we'll look for a motion.
I've spent half my life in South Weaver.
When they pour the deck, does he get to write his name in it?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.